I've often said, though, the best thing about my not having keys, at least then I don't have the excuse to come in on Saturday morning.
Right, right.
The fact that you're already here, I can just call.
Exactly. Although now with, um, now that I can get onto my emails and stuff, I email myself dot com.
Mm-hmm.
Or I put them on my flash and then I, um...
See, what you're saying is that now your kids are gone, you can actually work at home.
That's exactly.
Imagine my saying that right now!
That is exactly what I'm saying. But before I forget, I'm having lab work done in the mornings, I might be late.
Okay.
You have to make an appointment now. I said, "What's your first one tomorrow?" She said, "Seven AM." I said, "Okay, I'll see you then."
Um, they, did you, I didn't notice this until today, but apparently just on the online form, they now have a slot that says doctor's appointment versus just illness self.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I never.
I didn't notice that either.
I did, I ju- literally just noticed it today.
Did I mark that last time?
So I don't know if that was, I don't either.
I probably just saw something in there.
It doesn't matter, because obviously, but I was like, "Oh, I don't think I ever noticed this."
I know, the last one I did, I did for family.
Well, we have the applicants, but we do not have so far any of our planning commission members.
I'm gonna give you some of these nasty craps. It's amazing what you can get done in an hour here when nobody's here.
Mm-hmm.
All these little tiny things I needed to get to, and it's like, okay.
That's why I come in on a Saturday or Sunday, for usually a Sunday, just for like an hour even, just little things.
Yeah, I, I do the same thing, go in my private office for just a couple hours on the weekend, and I get more work done in those two hours than I do the rest of the week. When I'm bouncing between hearings and meetings and court and the phone ringing.
Here we have, uh... I'm not sure.
Oh, that's Michael Bruder's girlfriend.
Oh, okay.
I met her the other day.
So he's calling in from her.
Let's call him Iris.
Yeah.
Iris is not, um, from the charter review, is she?
No, it's not that one. It's a different one.
Okay.
He was very nice. When I deliver packets, three of them were like standing in the yard. Just like, I never see any of them, and this time I saw three of them. Met Amanda's little dog.
Amanda's got a nice office.
Mm-hmm, sunny.
Can they hear?
Mm-hmm. I didn't mute, I could mute.
Doesn't matter.
I couldn't mute the phone, but yeah.
I would say that I wouldn't say their face, so.
Alright, we're missing Jeff, and you said...
Jeff's not coming.
Oh, that's right, Jeff's not coming. You said Peter will be late?
Peter may be late.
Okay.
So if he's not here right, right on time, he'll be here shortly.
Oh, Harry's here.
Good job. Good job, Peter.
Is it Chris Matthews representing the applicant? Because I thought the applicant was Anna, right?
Her name's Anna Matthews.
Okay, yes, okay, they're there then. Well, since we don't have, um, Jeff, in one minute, we can start it. Does Amanda know Jeff's not coming?
Oh, probably not.
I do.
You do?
I do, yeah.
Oh, I put it in the email, so yeah.
Yep. And is Mr. Fink there as well?
Yep.
Okay.
Jen, Bridgette, and Eric are all here in our mystery conference room.
How does he are here?
And did we have any, uh, people from the public request to Zoom link?
No, other than the four public comments that you received scanned and via email, that is the only public comment request we've received. I've not received any request to join the Zoom meeting.
Okay.
It's streaming on YouTube right now, so there may be people watching, but there's been no one that's asked to be part of public comment tonight.
Okay, well, we will go ahead then and call to order the planning commission meeting today, September fifteenth, twenty twenty, at seven o'clock PM. Roll call, please.
Ms. Edwards?
Present.
Mr. Bruder?
Present.
Mr. Clevenger Morris?
Present.
Mr. Pano?
Present.
Uh, Mr. Clapper called and said he was unable to attend tonight.
Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Clapper?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Motion carries four to zero. The planning commission operates in accordance with the provisions of the Kent City Charter, the Kent Zoning Code, and Subdivision Regulations, all which establish the powers and duties of the commission. Members of the planning commission are appointed by Kent City Council and serve without compensation. Certain cases, such as conditional zoning certificates, special zoning permits, overlay district projects, and zoning amendment, require public hearings before the planning commission. During the public hearing, any persons wishing to address their concerns to the commission will be provided the opportunity. Once the public hearing is closed, it shall be to the discretion of the chair whether to allow any additional public comment. Cases such as site plan reviews and subdivision projects do not require a public hearing. However, the chair will allow public comment on each case as it is taken on the agenda. In each instance where the commission receives public comment or conducts a public hearing, those persons wishing to address their concerns to the commission will be required to do so under oath or positive affirmation. The oath or affirmation shall be administered to all who wish to speak at the beginning of the planning commission meeting. Once a decision has been made by the planning commission on a case, the case is closed for the commission as there is no provision to reopen a case. With the exception of cases falling under the subdivision code, any decision of the planning commission may be appealed to the city's Board of Zoning Appeals in accordance with Chapter eleven oh nine of the zoning code. Anyone interested in appealing a decision of the planning commission is advised to seek private legal counsel. Mr. Fink, would you like to administer the oath, please?
If anyone is planning on testifying before the planning commission, which is you, Ms. Matthews, please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you give before the planning commission shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to correspondence. Commissioners received four email correspondences in regards to PC two zero dash zero one two, which this is the South Prospect Home Occupation Physical Therapy Office. There was an email from Josh Odom, a resident across the street from the address, supportive of the business, provided the signage is tasteful and there is a designated area for parking. An email from Mark Rose, who's the owner of two one five South Prospect, he was not in favor of the house being, um, at his words, rezoned. Linda White, the owner of two oh six South Prospect, she did mention in the email that the wrong address was on the city's email. As a side note, Ms. White had called the office on August twenty first mentioning this, and Ms. File had resent the notices on August twenty first with the corrected address. She continued to talk in her email about being opposed to the business, seeing that there was no parking on the property and not enough on the streets for the residents, that the alleyway is public and not private, and that it's very busy with UPS, FedEx, and garbage trucks. She feels there's no proper parking to accommodate this business and feels that the city has already ruined the neighborhood by allowing apartments. Um, additionally, another email from Jim Doni, he had submitted, um, signatures from residents who were opposed to the physical therapy practice. On that, um, paper were signatures from Mark Cron of two one five South Prospect as a homeowner, Jim Doni of two twenty South Prospect as a homeowner, Josh Odom at three oh four South Prospect as an owner, Bill Coe at two one nine South Prospect as an owner, Daniel Costa at one four three South Prospect as an owner, Linda White, two oh six South Prospect as an owner, um, Pete M., I was unable to read the last name, two one four and two two seven South Prospect as the owner, and Patrick Mason of two oh two South Prospect, and it looked like he was a member of an LLC. Um, have all commissioners had adequate time to review those emails?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving on, we have no old business, so we'll go straight to new business. New business case, PC two zero dash zero one two, Ms. Anna Matthews, three oh five South Prospect Street. The applicant is seeking a conditional zoning certificate for a home occupation to operate a physical therapy business. The subject property is zone R three, which is high-density residential zoning district. Would staff like to present this project, please?
Yes, thank you. As you said, the applicant is seeking approval for a home occupation to operate a physical therapy business at her house at three oh five South Prospect Street. She's proposing hours of operations to be from eight AM to eight PM, Monday through Friday, with one patient per hour, but no more than eight hours in any one day. Um, the applicant is the only person working at this home occupation. Home occupations are conditionally permitted use in the R three zoning district. I have listed the conditions in your staff report. Um, staff believes all these have been met. Um, from internal reviews, the chief building official had some concerns about the emergency items in the house, and so staff is recommending a condition of approval to have the chief building official and the fire prevention officer, um, visit the site to make sure all those are in compliance. The health commissioner had concerns about ADA accessibility, um, probably when the chief building official visits, he can determine if they need a ramp to get into the building or not. The parking for the site is, um, adjacent to the garage, which is off of the alley, alley number thirty. It does appear that there is adequate room to park two or three cars in the space that is, um, provided. The utilities and the stormwater are all existing, so there's no changes there. The applicant may have a one-square-foot unlit sign if she wishes to, um... She may decide to do this in the future, at which point she would just need to come and obtain a sign permit. There's no additional changes to the lighting, landscaping, or the dumpster. Because if there's no changes, the architectural review board did not have to review this, and there are no variances that were required. So should the planning commission wish to approve this project, I have some, um, suggested language with the conditions that I had mentioned earlier, and technical plan review, which is the permit process.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Barone. Ms. Susel or Mr. Fink? Anything else from legal or community?
No, thank you.
I think Ms. Barone adequately summarized all the legal aspects.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Matthews, would you like to, uh, present your case this evening?
Yes, I would, thank you. Um, yes, I'm looking to, um, just start to build up a physical therapy practice. I am planning to offer visits to patients' homes, but I thought it would be a nice option to also have a home office where, if patients prefer, that they could come here, um, for physical therapy services. The hours that I had written on the application are kind of the maximum, so because I would be seeing probably some patients in their homes, um, I would, I think realistically, you'd think maybe just a few patients a day. So, um, like Jennifer mentioned, the, there's parking and really, I'm going to be seeing one patient at a time, so there would be one car, and potentially two, you know, if people are overlapping a little bit, coming and going. Um, but I do believe that the parking and, um... Yeah, I think that's, that's the main thing. Just, um, I think some of the concerns with the emails that were received are picturing more of a commercial practice, and I'm really just getting started. Um, and if at any point it does become kind of busy, you know, steady work, I would be interested in renting a space probably downtown, but I'm just kind of looking for a way to get started.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Um, commissioners, do you have any questions in regards to, uh, the conditional zoning certificate for staff or Ms. Matthews before we move on? Hearing and seeing none, um, and also, we have no members from the public present this evening, so we will not have any public comment. We mo- we will move on to planning commission discussion. Um, Mr. Bruder, would you like to start?
Um, I do not have any comments or questions of the project.
Mr. Pano?
Uh, let me see if I'm muted or not here.
I can hear you.
Okay. Um, as far as I can tell, all the requirements from section eleven seventy-one point oh one nineteen are met. Uh, so it's a, it's a permitted use.
Conditionally permitted use.
What's that?
Conditionally permitted use.
Conditionally permitted use, sorry. Uh, it seems like everything has been met. I... Um, let's see. I drove by the property, there seems to be ample parking on the, uh, on the alleyway, uh, either in front of the garage, or it seems like there's a little parking area in front of a fence, or there's a fence with some parking area on it also. Uh, so I don't see that as being a problem. I would say that, uh, it doesn't seem like it would be a big issue to make the side entry ADA accessible. Um, but I don't recall, uh, I could be wrong, any of the other home occupations that we've done in the past that we brought that requirement up, so I'm not so sure that that's a requirement of planning commission or some other, uh, entity in the city. So, that's all I have to say for now.
Mr. Clevenger Morris?
Just a couple of things. Um, I mean, first and foremost, I think my biggest concern here is the ADA compliance issue. While I respect that we haven't necessarily required this in the past, um, I don't know that I can point to another instance where we were looking at a home space in healthcare. I think if you're going to be bringing individuals in, um, for some sort of healthcare field, you should definitely make sure that your space that you're utilizing is ADA compliant. I think the fact that we've had officials make that recommendation, we should definitely take it under advisement. I do have some concerns with what some of the neighbors have said about parking. Um, I appreciate that the alley's there. Um, the alley doesn't seem to be very level for individuals who are trying to walk in for PTOT, but that's a separate issue. But like I said, my biggest concern here is the ADA requirement piece. I also unfortunately found the opening comments from Ms. Matthews to be slightly contradictory to what she had posted in her cover letter. Uh, in the cover letter, she had mentioned that as a sole employee, she planned to see one patient per hour for up to eight hours a day, but in her testimony here tonight, she said that she would be looking at a few a day in the home versus going elsewhere. So I'm just curious as to what that balance would actually look like. But that's about it for me.
Okay. Um, yeah, I have similar thoughts on... If this project is approved, Ms. Matthews can, you know, see clients forty, fifty, sixty hours a week. Um, so that's kind of where I'm teetering is a limited practice. I don't see a problem with, uh, there's not a lot of traffic going through. Um, it's more limited, but at the same time, it could become a, a full practice with layovers every hour between two clients, and, um, that's a concern. Um, going down the alleyway and the way that the parking is, um, to go from South Prospect and to pull in at an angle is fine, but if cars come in through the other side of the alley, maneuvering to those angled spots is a little bit of a challenge. Um, there was also a compact vehicle there when I went by. I don't know if my vehicle would fit well without hanging into the alley, so that's a thought. And I counted eight children running around in that alley when I went through today. Um, that is not in the alley, but right next to the alley, and that is a concern, that there's a lot of children in that residential area, um, when I went through today. So those are just some of my thoughts. Um, do commissioners want me to go through the basis of determination one at a time like we've been doing, or is everyone comfortable with the basis?
Yes, please.
Can I insert just a second?
Yep.
Uh, just so I, if my memory is correct, the parking in the alley is limited to thirty minutes anyways.
Right. They're for, it's for loading and unloading in a maximum of thirty minutes parking.
But they're not parking in the alley, they're parking on her private property.
Right.
So if any, if anyone tried to park in the alley, they wouldn't be able to be there for their whole visit.
Right, so it'd have to be in her private property. She would have to make sure that they were not parking in the alley.
Okay. Okay. Um, basis of determination, so we have six, um, factors. One shall be harmonious with and in accordance with the general objectives or with any specific objective of the land use and thoroughfare plan. Any comments on thoroughfare plan and land use?
Would the parking fall under that section?
No.
Okay, moving on to number two, shall be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained so as to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and that such use shall not change the essential character of the same area. Number three, shall not be hazardous or disturbing to existing or future neighboring uses.
Uh, I think I would make an argument under this one in regard to the traffic flow in the parking. If they're not able to use the, because of the thirty-minute target limitation for the alleyway itself, that means that you're going to have people pulling into the driveway and parking, like you said, at the home. So my concern is if the resident is parked at the home or residence, I'm not sure how many people live there, how many vehicles, uh, belong to the property itself. You're talking about people pulling in, overlapping appointments here. I would tend to believe that cars are gonna get blocked in, that it's going to become difficult to move cars in and out, depending on where cars are parked for the day. So people backing in and out of the alley, backing into the street, to allow for people to move their cars to fit, enter, exit. To me, that could be a hazard to the neighborhood if someone's coming down that street, and for the children who are playing in that street.
But wouldn't the, wouldn't staff have not approved that on a technical standpoint if that were true? I mean, Jennifer has said that the parking meets the requirements of the city. If it didn't meet it, that would be noted in our report. Correct, Jennifer?
That's correct. We actually went over the parking quite a bit to try to figure out something that would fit right. But they are parking on her property, so.
So you're, you're confident that the parking that's provided is adequate and doesn't cause a hazard?
Correct. They can also park on South Prospect on one side of the street, I think it's the east side, they're parking a lot on the street.
Okay. I, I just wanted to clarify that, that I, I mean, I think that that would have been a, a determination made by the city. Okay.
Um, that was number three, and I want to mention number two. Um, I thought about it after we talked about it. Being harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the vicinity. I'm just keeping in mind that, at least to my knowledge, right now, the vicinity is residential, and that this would be opening up business and then possibly growing or changing the character of that neighborhood over time. Um, number four, shall not be detrimental to property in the immediate vicinity or to the community as a whole. Number five, shall be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highway streets, police, fire, drainage structures, or that the persons or agencies responsible for the establishment of such shall you, or of such use shall be able to adequately provide such service, such as refuse disposal. And then number six, shall have vehicular approaches to the property, which shall be so designed as to not create interference with traffic on surrounding public streets or roads. So those are the six bases of determination. Any further discussion on those?
No.
I, I, I would just add, in terms of the traffic, I, I mean, I think one car per hour, even two, is negligible, uh, whether it's on the alley or on Prospect. I mean, you know, this property is immediately adjacent to Haymaker, which has tens of thousands of cars a day. And so I, I just don't know that I would consider this particular business model to make a, a noticeable increase into the traffic, to where it would warrant a traffic study or anything, uh, as mentioned, or, or it would have been required if it, if there was a concern from the city's planning staff.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none. I'm gonna move on to the applicant. Do you have any final comments before we move forward?
No, I don't.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that in case PC twenty dash zero twelve, the planning commission approved the conditional zoning certificate to operate a physical therapy business at three oh five South Prospect Street, subject to the following conditions. One, technical plan review. Two, pass inspections conducted by both the fire prevention officer and the chief building official. And three, compliance with ADA requirements.
There a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
I have a, I, I have a concern that we just say ADA requirements. That's a very, very broad statement. I think you all mean just a ramp. Are we asking this person to build a handicap-accessible bathroom?
Perhaps a applicable ADA compliance, unless the chief building official determines?
They could just say ramp, because that's what we're.
Yeah, I didn't, I, go ahead, Michael.
No, no, I, I think, I think your intent was just a ramp, Peter, but I think that we should limit this, this is a pretty broad... Yeah, so maybe, I, I don't know how to amend the, uh, if you want to amend your motion before we move forward?
Yes, I will. I would like the ADA, ADA requirement to only include a ramp for accessibility in and out of the structure.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Actually, in this case, since Peter's made the motion, it's Chris's, we did the second, so we have to ask Mr. Clevenger Morris if he wishes to still have his second qualify.
So I have a question first, uh, but the answer's probably yes. Um, what was the official recommendation from the health commissioner in regard to concerns about ADA accessibility? Was the ramp the only concern, or were there other concerns from the health commissioner?
It was the chief building official.
No, it was the health commissioner, it was the ramp.
Oh, was it? Okay. But it'll be done to building code requirements.
Right.
If, if the only concern of the health commissioner is the ramps, then I will gladly accept the amendment.
Okay. So the original motion has been amended, seconded with the amendment. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing and seeing none. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Motion carries four to zero. All right. Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to, um, a work session for the zoning code update. This is work session number nine. The proposed zoning code text amendment was forwarded to commission for review and comment. Its chapters eleven twelve, eleven thirteen, and eleven fourteen. Um, Ms. Susel, do you want to, or Ms. Barone, go through these?
Go ahead, Eric, do it.
Yeah, we're gonna let Eric do it, but I'm gonna try to share the screen. Hey, why is it not coming? Hang on, we're getting organized here with our papers.
There I go.
Yep, August fourteenth, not June twenty-third.
What, is Eric, where is my desk? Last time we were able to find it easily. These files. Before we were able to just do the screen, remember, with the BCA meeting?
Yeah.
Why is it not coming up?
There not a screen share button at the bottom?
I have the screen share, but it's not bringing up my desktop as an option under files, it's listing uh everything but. I do not, I mean, it's showing Dropbox, Microsoft One Drive, Google Drive, Bo, um, and Box, which none of those are what I want.
Just click share right now.
It goes away.
Oh.
It's just, it's basically our.
You minimize that screen.
Oh wait, yeah, there we go, hang on.
There we go.
Okay, but that's not how we got there last time.
No, but.
That's all right, it worked, okay, here we go, we're good, we got here. We got here a different way last time, but it's okay, all right.
All roads get to Rome.
Yeah, all roads lead to Rome, all right.
All right, so this is a really big chunk of the changes that we are proposing. And definitely directly involves um all three boards, the Planning Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Architecture Review Board. And this is one that really didn't involve as much of the um other experts because these are the things that we have all dealt with, and I think uh the four of you have dealt with as well, and so it should have a lot of firsthand experience. In any event, what we wanted to do is make the boards uh set up a parallel structure for all of them so that we would be able to uh have some consistency in how the boards are set up. We also wanted to have a singular place so that when somebody is appointed new or if there's changing boards, or if they just want to look it up, that all the issues for the Planning Commission or the BCA or the Architecture Review Board, they've got one place to look. Instead of four or five chapters, just have one place to go find the information that you need. So we started out by doing chapter eleven twelve, administrative boards and commissions. And these are the issues that apply to all the boards. Uh, this would be, like I said, the maintenance of records, uh, how the uh meetings uh, how meetings are to be conducted, uh, making sure we have all the announcements made, that all the disclose, public disclosures are made. Uh, just the things that would apply to everybody, we put under the eleven twelve. And then under eleven thirteen, or I said, actually, that's eleven twelve oh one. Then when you get to eleven twelve oh two, we finally get to issues that directly apply to the Planning Commission. So that, and that comes up, I think, on page twelve dash fourteen, when we finally get to the Planning Commission. So I don't want to jump ahead too fast, let's first go through just the issues that apply to all the various boards. You see, uh, but in the A section talks about um any time to be amending the zoning code or conflicts of interest, because, because those issues apply across the board. Then B is public hearings, that discusses the notices that will be required, what types of information needs to be contained within the notices.
Which also plays across the board.
It, yeah, it applies across the board, that's why it's in eleven twelve oh one. This information isn't necessarily new to the Planning Commission, but because it's a new section, that's why this material is all in red. It still includes the requirements to be published in a newspaper as well as mailing to people that are close by.
Eric, can I jump to um the conflict of interest, which was number four?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to ask, what if, um, you know, it says that you would talk about what the conflict is and then join the audience and/or remove yourself from the room? What if the member is the applicant or representative? I mean, the member is the applicant or a representative?
That is something that is, um, obviously, uh, Member Pano has a lot of experience with, as we've been going through that. Said, if they are representing themselves only, I think it said, been allowed to uh participate, but if they're representing somebody else, uh, they are not allowed to do that in front of any organization, uh, any other board within the city of Kent.
So is that in a different part of the zoning code?
That is our interpretation of what's in the Ohio Attorney General standards. We are not making that part of the zoning code, because if the Ohio Attorney General changes the uh requirements, we would stay in uh conformity with what the Ohio Attorney General is advising us to do. We're not trying to be any stricter than the Ohio Attorney General, but we're not trying to be any, we, I think, are prohibited from being looser than the Ohio Attorney General.
And when Eric says rep, uh, presenting by themselves in front of the board, that means they can present, but they're not a voting member on that board.
Correct. So again, not to pick on Mr. Pano, but I will, if Mr. Pano is thinking to get a variance for something he's doing at his own house, he can still present that type of issue, but if it's in front of his own board, he obviously could not vote on that particular issue. If he is presenting on my house, he would not be allowed to present on my house.
At any court.
And that is, this is Mr. Pano speaking. And that's a state law?
That is not a state law, that is an Ohio Attorney General decision, which has the effect of law, but it has not since been ever voted on by the Ohio General Assembly. But if we act out of conformity with that, we can be sued.
What if, what if I wanted to, let's say the physical therapy practice? What if I wanted to open a physical therapy practice and needed to come get a conditional zoning permit? Could I do that even though I'm a member of the Planning Commission?
You could do that, you could not vote on it, but you could present because it's your own application. You could not, however, represent a family member, a neighbor, a hu- husband, or anything like that, spouse, but you can still represent yourself. We, we don't think anything Attorney General's opinions prevents you from representing yourself.
Okay, and when it says join the audience and/or remove yourself, is that a choice?
If it's and/or, it would have to be a choice.
We definitely have deliberately left it open to, depending on the circumstances of what need, what appears to be most appropriate in that circumstance. As the attorney, I would be recommending different answers depending on what the level of the conflict was.
Okay.
Can we go back to twelve seven?
I, I have one, is that, is that the uh conflict of interest, Chris, or is that a different section? I have one other thing on the conflict of interest I want to clarify.
Go ahead and do your part first.
Okay, thank you. Um, so Eric, I'm sort of trying to understand this representing other things. So um, I volunteer on the Kent Social Services Board, and I have been working with Jennifer and Heather to get things ready for a Planning Commission meeting. They've asked me as a volunteer to present it. You're saying that I, and I assumed that I wouldn't vote on it when it came to the Planning Commission, it's scheduled for November third. Are you saying I can't even present it, I better get somebody else to present it?
I would say that you couldn't even present it. Even though you're not getting paid, you're not getting any financial benefit, uh, the fact that you are a member of the Planning Commission would give you undue influence over that presentation, and it's not for your own specific interest. So, yes, I would say that, and again, that's, I, I'm not saying that's something from the city of Kent, we're just trying to make it, make it more public about what we believe the Attorney General has mandated that we do.
Okay.
You would said, uh.
Well, I mean, I, is, is that in effect now, or is this more clarified with these changes? Because I guess I'm, you know, I was wondering, like, nobody has said anything to me about that, and that is maybe why Peter's been frustrated in the past or things, is, you know, I just assumed that I got a letter from Kent Social Services that says, I can submit on their behalf, um, and nobody said, well, yeah, but you can't present. So I, so you're telling me that I have to find someone else to present to the Planning Commission? And now am I supposed to recuse myself because I'm on the board?
Because, now, okay, now that's a good question. If you're on the board of Kent Social Services, then um I would advise you to recuse yourself from actually voting on that matter as well. If you were simply a member of Kent Social Services, I would not advise you to, that you had to recuse yourself from voting on that matter. Your, being a fiduciary of the organization would change my advice as the attorney for the Planning Commission. And that is, that is my advice separate and apart from anything from what the Ohio Attorney General has stated. The, what was also important about that is those are your requirements if you were presenting in front of the Planning Commission. Because there is no financial interest, uh, you would, um, nope, 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 I'm, I'm talking that through.
I don't think so.
Uh, I would, you, that would also prevent you from presenting in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals or Architecture Review Board.
How does that apply here?
That's not the city of Kent speak, speaking, that's more my interpretation of what the Ohio Attorney General has mandated.
So how does that apply if Mr. Pano or Mr. Bruder, say, have a client who needs to present in front of the Planning Commission? Does that mean they no longer, so no architect in the city of Kent who could have anything in front of the Planning Commission is going to want to take up this job now?
And that is one of the issues that has plagued the city, because we have lost several members of the Architecture Review Board because of exactly the issue you're talking about, Chris. That is, uh, we lost several people, Ms. Aiken leaps to mind, others as well, who have had to drop off the Architecture Review Board because of that requirement.
I, I, I'm not an, I'm not a, an attorney, but.
Yeah.
I, I vaguely understand what a conflict of interest is. But I cannot in any way, shape, or form see how there can be a conflict of interest in presenting a project to a city board with the, with the total understanding that you are obviously not gonna vote on it. I, I can't for the life of me understand that how that, how just the fact of presenting a project is a conflict. I, I don't see, I don't see how that's, I don't see how that's possible.
The Ohio Attorney General would argue that because we have a relationship with you, we may lean one way or the other because of you.
Uh, but I, I don't buy that, you're, 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 somebody's presenting, we have rules and regulations. The Architecture Review Board basically doesn't, so that's, that's a little arbitrary. And it gets into the core of the fact that our city has a wealth of trained professionals in design who are basically precluded from practicing in the city and also, and volunteering for free on these boards. And I, I just don't see every other community around here following those standards.
It's not just for the boards that you're dealing with with regards to private development. These same rules um or application of the Attorney General's ruling applies to all boards, so.
What about city council?
Would apply to them as well.
So they have, so when they're talking about something that's related to a wife or somebody, or where they work, they have to leave the room?
They basically recuse themselves from it. For example, anything dealing with part, uh, Jack Amerine completely recuses himself from any discussion or that vote. He actually comes off of a committee if it's, if he's uh one of the chair or vice chair on that committee. Um, we've also had it occur with private interests that if they have a business interest as a partner or even some uh small level of investment in a property, if it has to deal with anything that would deal with that, they also recuse themselves from the vote.
But, but Peter's point is that you're, you're still, the recusal of the vote is understood, it's that you can't even present, that.
They're, they're, they don't discuss either, though. They're not, they don't participate in the council discussion on the item at all.
But they don't have to, but they're still, they still have that interest with that group, and they are still on the board. I guess it, it feels a little bit different because they don't have to necessarily uh walk away from work, from livelihood, but that's, I, I mean, I, I understand that you're defending the Attorney General's.
Well, I'm not trying to defend the Attorney General, like I said, I, i- i- it seems awfully absurd to me on a personal level that you are prohibited from volunteering and working at the same ti, I said, I, I understand, I said, we need to have more volunteers. We, our city operates with volunteer citizens coming in, and to have them uh forego economic development because of their volunteering seems counterintuitive, and this is something, that's why I've spent so much time reviewing the Attorney General's opinions on it, because I keep looking for a way to say, that's not the case. Unfortunately, every time I look at, and I've submitted some of the information over to Peter also, I can't find a way around the Attorney General's decisions.
Okay.
All right.
And if I could, I would.
I appreciate that.
Law director.
All right.
So just to clarify, because I got really lost in there, Mr. Bruder can either present and then recuse himself, like, you know, leave the, the board and present, and that's it? Or someone else can present and he can participate in discussion and vote because there's no financial.
No.
No, he can do neither.
Neither of those.
It's the ghost.
Yeah, I'll be off that day.
Unless Michael recues and resigns from the board or the commission, which we're not encouraging him to do.
Yeah, please don't do that.
Please don't.
But the problem with that is, then you still have the one-year overlap where you still cannot do it.
And Peter's exactly right about that, and that's, now, that's not the Attorney General, that is a uh ordinance passed by the city of Kent about twenty-odd years ago now?
Yeah, but we've updated the board.
That's not a good law.
Okay.
Our, our hands are tied on this section, is what you're saying, Eric.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Clevenger Morse, you had something on page seven.
Yeah, if we can just go page by page, um, I had a, in, in two sections there. One, under section two subsection D, it talks about, uh, at the end it says copies of each revision or amendment must be retained, but it doesn't specify as to how. I believe in another section of this document, we reference our record retention policy. I was curious if we can do that there. Uh, and then the other piece was sections D and E reference amendments specifically both to the zoning code and zoning map amendments. I was wondering if it would make more sense to move them under section three instead of section two, since section three is the amendment section.
Chris, what uh, what page are you on?
Twelve seven and twelve eight.
Twelve seven and twelve eight, okay.
So the first part was twelve seven, under the zoning code and amendments, the last sentence, copies of each revision or amendment must be retained. Later on in this document, we reference our record retention policy. I would rather it not be as vague there and at least specify that we're following that policy or specify how we're retaining those records, since we're eliminating that from the previous text. And then the second part of that.
The only reason, Chris, why I would disagree with you about that is because under D and E, we're talking about maintaining the records, where number three is the actual process of, of authority to the Planning Commission, BCA, and Architecture Review Board to make changes, uh, to, to recommend changes to the zoning code itself.
It's two different things.
And then the other thing on twelve eight, under conflict of interest, um, I had a question about, throughout this entire document, we do a lot of individual X will recuse himself, herself. Um, I wanted to ask about potentially using gender-neutral language for themself or theirself only because I think later on, we're gonna run into a situation where a legal argument can be made where someone says, I don't identify as himself or herself, and try to make the argument that it's not going to apply. And I don't think it changes any of the actual pieces here to change any of the language from himself, herself, to themself and theirself.
Uh, you, that may come up in more than one instance throughout the code, but uh we can definitely look at that, I.
We'll try to.
I mean, fortunately, we've got, that's, that's part of the benefit of having the find replace function on the computer.
Themselves.
And Chris, you, you may be right about where things are going, so I'm not trying to say, I mean, it's.
Gender, gender arguments completely aside, I, I think we're gonna get to a point soon where we start to see individuals. Gender arguments completely aside, I, I think we're going to get to a point soon where we start to see individuals make a certain argument and it, I think it's just easier to avoid a fight.
You could also say, and the member can recuse.
Right.
Just make a general.
Well, we should be looking for that. And you're right, Chris, avoiding the arguments a better route than actually trying to defend language that doesn't, yeah.
We'll do general neutral, but I like it in the singular, so maybe we change it to say the member.
Yeah. Yeah, Chris, could you hear that suggestion?
I was suggesting that.
I'm fine with a singular.
Yeah, so if we could just change the wording to be like the member, you know, versus saying.
Right.
And do it throughout, and that way then it won't, it is gender neutral, but we're still talking because we're often referencing a single person.
Yes, Bridget and I both, uh, have a difficulty doing plurals instead of singular, so I, the, uh, but, but I, I totally get where you're going with that, Chris.
But we could literally just flip flop some words around and make it member, so we'll do that. We'll, we'll look at those, we're going to be doing a final audit, edit and everything anyway, so that's something that we can do, uh, a find and then tweak the wording to allow for it to be, say, member or in certain cases, if it's not a commission member, it might be a staff person, so we can, we can replace that.
And, and you're right, so one of the things when we were reviewing the zoning code, not so much this time around, but in previous times, when we found language that may have been perfectly appropriate when the language was written, but really was, uh, hard to read now, uh, we've eliminated most of those things before this go around, but it's good to be looking for those issues.
Yeah, right now, yeah, okay.
My next issue, no, my next issue's on twelve, nine, if no one else has anything on twelve, eight.
I just have a question about public hearings and it kind of goes into like where things are going, um, for the notices in newspapers and general circulation. Newspapers are.
That is actually, it's still required by state and federal law. We agree that it'll be, and one of the issues that we had, um, as you may know with COVID was even having a public meeting, not with the public. We had to actually wait for a ruling to come out of the State Attorney General's office dealing with that, and we didn't have any, which is why we didn't have meetings for a while. Until they officially said, um, in, in response to the emergency, we could do virtual meetings. But as soon as this is over, everything goes back to what it was and that wording of newspaper, of general circulation is a standard phrase in, in laws. We agree, we do it, we do do it electronically as well, but we still have to advertise everything in the paper.
So in ten years, we may be advertising in the Beacon Journal.
Correct, unless they change that at the state and federal level. We did, we have to do it for many programs and we're, that's why you still have those legal notices sections.
That everybody carefully reads.
We do.
So on twelve, nine, you were saying, Chris?
Um, I was looking at sections, updated sections C and D and wondering if we needed to flip those because section D is talking about the content that would go into the newspaper and correspondences. And section C is the sign, the content would go along with section A and B, as far as the way it flows, if that makes sense.
I, I like that suggestion.
I just feel like we jump out of giving notices to putting up a sign to how we should give the notices again.
No, I, I think that makes sense, Chris, I think it does.
We, we can flip flop that, that's easy. Here, C and D. So that basically the content follows the ad and then sign will be after that. Okay.
Um, in the areas that say error, reference source not found, that's just because the sections aren't ready yet, right?
Uh, that's actually, those are hyperlinks that we're trying to, um, install, so we didn't want to delete them because we want to keep the, we want to make sure we attach the proper hyperlinks, but correct, the, uh, because the number. Right.
Because we're, we're, um, editing so much, if the hyperlinks were activated, it would, it would go haywire, um, with everything. So we're basically trying to get them in position and then once we get through everything, we'll be looking at all of those, verifying they're going to the right section. Editing, the, we still have to go through an extensive word by word review of all of this. At this point though, we're just trying to get through the content and then we have to deal with a lot of details, which is going to take us a while, so.
I'm good until twelve, sixteen.
I have something on twelve, twelve.
I have something on twelve, twelve.
Okay, twelve, twelve.
Go ahead, Chris.
Uh, so the first thing I had and one of the issues that we run into on section four, we talk about if no construction is started within one year of the date of the permit, a new permit is required, reapplication must be made. We just discussed this, I think, two meetings ago, what the definition of construction actually is. And Eric said, as long as someone puts a shovel in the ground, it's construction. So should we define construction or do we want to leave it vague? It just seems like somewhat of a cop out on our behalf to be able to say, well, they've started construction because they put a piece of wood with orange paint on it in the ground, so it's construction.
We've gone that route for now because that's the, uh, state standard. But we could certainly consider, I mean, there is, nothing says it through home rule, we couldn't try to create our own version of it. Um, but generally speaking, that, that's the language that o- other cities use and so that's why we were not trying to be that different from anybody else.
And typically for a developer, the financial drive to get a project done in a timely manner is there for construction cost bidding. So typically if there is a delay, it's usually something that is completely unforeseen. So, um, we do try to allow some leniency with, with regards to defining that construction. Um, all projects are not constructed the same nor built in a timely manner based on various reasons. So, um, we would probably want to keep it vague. If there's a project that is extensively delayed and it's not going forward, we, we would be able to put the pressure on using this code saying that you didn't meet that requirement.
Okay, then the only other thing I had on that, sorry.
We rarely do that, however, our goal is to facilitate development and not make, um, them have to keep coming back or dealing with administrative.
Right. The only other thing I had was in section six, uh, the fourth line, the word B does not need to be there.
You are right.
Uh, where, fees and bonds and deposits?
Yeah, right near the finance, crossed out.
Oh, yeah, I see it.
Yep.
And he, she, B is hereby authorized.
Yeah.
We'll just change that to like applicant.
Right, to make that gender neutral.
Like, we'll just dub in applicant, member, um, staff representative or staff person when we get there to those.
Well, I was just more worried about the word B because it didn't go with the sentence itself, not the gender neutrality of.
We actually had a few of those, like the Bs, we've had, that's from the prior code. There's a lot of verbiage and words that we eliminated. Yeah, lots of extra words.
We love taking them out.
Yes, we do.
Peter?
Peter, you said you had something on twelve?
I had one question on same page, twelve, twelve, uh, number E. It says health commissioner approval. It says no zoning permit will be issued without evidence that the health commissioner has approved the proposed sanitary sewage facilities. Has that always been the case?
No, we actually thought we deleted that, that should be stricken. That's how, that's out of their purview.
It used to be the case when we had more septic systems and we, your jurisdiction went three miles outside of the city limits. But it's our language now, we'll strike that.
Okay, because that didn't seem to make sense to me. And then same. The same thing that, um, Chris was talking about, so if you get your zoning permit and you don't do anything for a year, the permit by this expires, then you have to pay for it again?
Yeah.
And reapply, go in front of the book, Planning Commission again.
Just why we like.
Seriously, okay.
Which is why.
Unless you're a member of the Planning Commission.
Which is why we have the, it doesn't take a lot to make the construction beginning requirement so that you can get the project, do something of the project to keep your permit intact.
And typically the permits are all issued together, so you get your construction, your utilities and your zoning permit at the same time. We don't, we don't issue a zoning permit unless there's some other kind of permit to go with it when it's required.
Okay, well, I mean, that can be a problem, but I, I, I understand it, looking at it from both ways. And, and then on page twelve, thirteen, number seven, certificate of occupancy. It says no certificate of occupancy, uh, the last sentence is no certificate of occupancy can be issued prior to the issuance of a zoning permit.
Correct.
Is that something that could possibly come up?
We would like to think that our building inspector would never be, uh, supplying occupancy permits without an applicant going through zoning. But in order to prevent that from ever happening, if for whatever reason the building official didn't take the appropriate steps, the law would trump whatever actions the building official took.
So in other words, if there's a certificate of occupancy given on a project, but for some reason there was never a zoning permit issued, you could rescind the certificate of occupancy?
Until the zoning permit was complied with, correct.
Okay, well, then, yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
Administratively, we do have a process here so that that doesn't happen, but we do, we still need a safeguard.
That's fine, I mean, I can see where on occasion some oddball job falls through the cracks. Uh, the other thing is section D, the zoning use certificate, is this something that's always been in the code?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yes.
Uh, but we haven't followed it very strictly over the years, or have we?
Since twenty eleven.
We did it before that.
Was it before that?
We did.
What, because I have that.
Dana used to be doing it, she was here when I.
So anytime somebody transfers a property.
Yeah. Yes, in fact, we have a system in internally that, um, Eric Homestar, our co enforcement officer, checks the auditor's website for property transfers and sales. And if the real estate agent, broker or, um, seller, um, had not requested a zoning use certificate from Heather Heckman, um, for that sale, we issue one and it needs to be signed by the buyer. And in cases where a transaction occurs, for lack of a better word, just between two private interests, which happens a lot in a college town with rental properties, it never actually makes it to a broker, it's just a private deal, uh, when we see that property transfer, we make them sign. So they know that it's a single family structure and limited to no more than two unrelated, or if it's, um, um, a rooming house, what the occupancy capacity is, or even for commercial uses.
Well, I can, I understand that the rooming house and rental units is part of the reason why you're doing this. But just for example, any house that sells in, for lack of a better term, my development in the last six months, which have been quite a few and they sell rather quickly, somebody is doing this?
The state wants us to have one of these by next Thursday when I close on my home?
The real estate agent should have, if you're being represented by a real estate agent, the real estate agent is required to contact our department to get that and it is signed by the, the seller and the buyer. And most real estate agents know that, we actually did a big reach out, what was that, about four years ago? I notified literally all the real estate agents through the associations, both in Portage and Summit County. Plus, um, when these have come up, we have brought it up. So most, most real estate agents know, if you're doing a private sale without going through a real estate agent, you are still responsible as the seller of the property for getting the zoning use certificate. So we will send one to a buyer, so if somebody bought one without getting it, they did a private deal and they were going to turn it into a rental and we give it to them and it shows it's a single family, no more than two unrelated, and they thought they could run out all four bedrooms, that's why we do it ahead of time. So before they close on the deal, they know what the requirements are for the zoning use on that property. So Chris, if you have a real estate agent, they should have contacted us and had that form done and completed at time of sale. If you're not doing it through a real estate agent and you're doing it through Zillow or yourself, um, the seller should contact us for that zoning use cert.
I'm just not going to comment on that at this time. Just above that section in section nine.
Yeah.
I think it should say parks and recreation, not park and recreation.
I have to look too.
Uh, twelve, thirteen, section nine, parks and recreation, second line, it says the impact fees related to park and recreation, should it be parks and recreation?
Well, they said that. We'll look it up.
I didn't know if we were consolidating our parks, just curious.
And I think it's supposed to be capitalized too. Although they might not be, they might just be referring to it in a general category. We'll have to look at that.
I probably would capitalize it.
I would too.
Yeah.
We'd capitalize it and make parks and recreation department too.
Yeah.
My next one is twelve, sixteen.
Anybody have anything before twelve, sixteen?
I have twelve, fifteen.
Okay.
So, and the, when it comes to the composition section, and this would apply to all three composition sections throughout the document, um, one of the things that we've seen in the past when there's been a vacancy on this commission and on other commissions and boards has not always been swift movement by the city to fill a vacancy. So I would be interested in adding in something that says that the council will endeavor to fill the position within X days. It doesn't require them to do that, but it might light a small fire under someone to actually get it done quickly. Because if one person misses a meeting and you have a vacancy, you're talking about potentially turning away a project.
Well, I would like to interject in that just, um, this tomorrow, actually, uh, the clerk of council, the law director and myself met to make recommendations on boards and commissions to counsel basically to allow for more consistency across the twenty-one boards, eleven of which are in community development. And also to address some antiquated language that was in the standing rules as as well in the code. So we are now able to advertise and promote, uh, positions through all forms of media. So before it was limited to the Tree City Bulletin and then an ad in the Record Courier. Now, um, and it's currently being done, but we're going to formalize it where it can be advertised, um, through any medium that is available to us. So social media, the website, the newspaper, Tree City Bulletin, so we should be able to get broader coverage. Also, those ads can be continuous, the clerk of council now tracks all positions, like we have two term, planning commission member terms expiring, um, um, one in December, one, December thirty first, one to January eighteenth. She will be sending notification to anyone that's able to, uh, reapply in those positions as well as advertising for those beginning in, um, October. So she's already doing it way ahead of time, so we never had such a formalized process. So we do, uh, feel that we were going to improve our ability to fill those vacancies and also have broader reach.
Okay, I will yield that point.
Yeah, and they, a council unanimously supported our recommendations with regards to the boards and commissions two weeks ago, so we anticipate a unanimous vote formalizing it tomorrow through legislative action.
Perfect. Um, under section three, this is more of a nitpicky thing for Eric, but under Roberts Rules of Order, can we say or parentheses current edition?
Which?
Yes, I.
Because it frequently changes.
Paragraph three of organization on page twelve, fifteen.
Oh, okay.
Whatever the current edition of Roberts Rules of Order.
And then my bigger issue on this page is when we're referencing, um, whenever only three voting members are present for a specific case, the applicant will have the option of requesting a postponement under section four quorum. I would like to update that language somehow that says that we must notify them of that option. I know that Amanda has done a fantastic job of always notifying them, but just so that we're being clear moving forward, if it's only going to be three and they're going to be required to have three yes votes to move forward, I think. I think we should be required to notify them of that.
Okay, I can add a sentence to that effect and.
We're going to change the word from postponement to continuance because that's usually what it's, the formal name is under Robert's Rules.
Yep.
I just don't want someone to come back later and say, well, I didn't realize that I had to get all three votes to have it pass and.
And we've been very good about saying that, but I think you're right. If we put it in the code, just because we're doing a good job, we want to make sure the next generation also does a good job. So I agree with you.
So notify me at the meeting. Because you want to know before that.
I'm working on a paragraph for that right now.
Okay.
And you'll have to do that in the other sections where the same types of rules apply.
Well, this section applies to, um, okay, no, you're right, because this is just plank fish, you're right. We'll have to do that across the board, you're right.
All right, Amanda, I'll get out of your way.
Uh, twelve sixteen, I like the, the grids. But, um, number eight in the grid, I think, I looked at it a couple of times, I think it's the same exact thing as number four. So I think that's duplicated.
Yeah, he did not remove it. So when we did this chart, the poor, um, consultant, we were making him move things, flip things, remove things, add things, and so there were some that we did strike. And that was probably one, because if you notice on that one, he, there's no dot, but it is up on four, so that one should be deleted, so good catch.
Okay, and then number nine had no dot, so I was going to ask where the dot should be, or maybe it shouldn't even be there then?
Well, let me see, we were really going, we had a lot of edits. Did you bring our edited one? I did not.
I didn't, no.
Let us look at that one and we will figure out where the dot goes, because I don't want to speak to it till I look back at the notes we had when we, before we did all, where we had staff notes, so we know what we hit. It's minor, is what Jen's saying.
But I'm thinking it might be somewhere else.
Is this one of the ones we put somewhere else and then deleted it from here? See, we did a lot of shifting on these tables, so it might need to go away if it's somewhere else, so we will look at that.
I have a question about the wording in section eleven. So right now it's a site improvements that include landscaping, lighting, site access, and parking lot grading, layout and new off-street parking unless the activity is exempt. So the way I read that is it has to include all of those things, it's not an and/or. So is the intention to include all of those things? Like, I could argue that you have to meet all of those to consider it for minor review.
Why we.
They don't have to be all of them, I don't know.
We, we, we don't know why we have and, it's probably an, an or, but we'll look at that too.
I just don't want someone to come back and say, well, I didn't have lighting, but I did have the others, so it didn't apply to me.
Is, is there a way, are you done, Chris? Okay, is. I want to go back to number four and number, uh.
Yeah.
Eight. So if there's a, an addition to a building of fifteen thousand square feet, the wording to me is confusing, I'm, I'm not as good. It seems like whatever is trying to be said there could be said easier.
Right, like fifteen thousand feet or less.
Yeah, I mean, just, and my others, I think that makes it a lot easier to understand, at least it does for me. But then, going back to, so if I look at this correct, and I could be wrong, major site plan review comes to the planning commission, minor site plan review does not.
Correct.
I think that, I, I think that information should be put prior to this graph. So that someone who's looking at it or a definite, I mean, or it's, it just seems like.
We could add a footnote there to make it easier, I think, Peter.
Something. I don't know what the answer is, but I was reading through this and then I'm going, well, what does the planning commission do? And then I, if it was, you know, a page or two past that.
So maybe move the table, um.
Well.
We'll have to look at requisitioning those. I see what you're saying, so the, the C where we talk about conducting site plan review and have the different things for minor and major, we would, um, maybe shift that and then move this after that.
It could be just a simple line that major site plan review goes before the planning commission, minor site plan review goes in front of the community development department, period. And then.
Um, I think it actually might be better to move it after we talk about the conducting site plan review, just because, um, it, it kind of lays out. So we'll look at that, the, with staff and, we have a, a meeting with our consultants on, um.
Okay.
Thursday, so we'll all look at it then, but I, I think we should move it.
Even if you do move it, I think Peter's point is well taken in that adding some clarifying language just as a note might make it easier for the everyday, not affiliated to planning commission person to understand it. Because if it's difficult for one of us to understand, it's probably not going to be easy for someone who's looking at adding stuff into the backyard.
Maybe even on the grid where it says development activity and then it says major site plan review, even just putting in parentheses requires planning commission review, and then minor site plan requires staff review, just real simple to clarify.
Someone who's looking at this goes, okay.
Yeah, that's good, we'll put it, yep.
My eyes are glazing over, so there's our two, I'm sure.
Yeah.
And then.
We can just add it to there.
Twelve seventeen, number fifteen. I, I, I have no idea what that says.
Twelve seventeen, what number?
Twelve, number fifteen, landscaping that is less than twenty-five percent of the parcel size or five thousand square feet, whatever is less. And it's exempt from review. I guess I'm going back to my old, when are we ever going to get landscaping to be part of our, our zoning code that has some teeth to it?
This is a parcel that just has landscaping, so in other words, it would not have any building on it. So it's exempt.
That's not clear here.
Yeah, but I had no clue what that meant, right?
Maybe we'll say something, uh, that only includes landscaping or something. We'll look at the wording on that.
Like a parcel that only includes landscaping and no.
Without any structure or whatever, because you could still have a gazebo that's a structure, I don't know.
Does that also apply to section sixteen then, when you're referencing the less than twenty percent of the size of the original building footprint or less than two thousand square feet? So what exactly does an alteration or renovation include? If I'm going to replace a kitchen cabinet, does that include the four feet that it takes to replace that kitchen cabinet, or does that include the entire kitchen because it's happening in it?
Well, you don't do internal.
Yeah.
Reviews, so it'd only be external.
Maybe it's just.
I think we took that out too. We'll look at that, but we are, uh, we think we removed that one, actually. I got to look back at my chart, her notes.
I'm good until twelve twenty-one, if anybody has anything before that.
Um.
That twelve fifteen section, I got a.
I have one thing on twelve nineteen. And that's under site plan required information. And it's number twenty-one, the one on the bottom of the page, it talks about detailed landscape plan. And it says, and this is for a major site plan review, you have to have a registered landscape architect stamp the drawings. Is that something new?
Don't remember.
Hold on, we're looking.
I don't have the code.
I mean, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong here, but that may also, the way it's worded, you know, sealed by a registered landscape architect, does, does that prohibit us from using digital formats of submission?
Say that again?
Would that, the way this is worded, because it says sealed by a registered landscape architect, is that going to prohibit us from submitting something by email?
No.
It's going to be in a.
But what it says is that the landscaping plan has to be submitted by a registered landscape architect.
Do you think that should be included, or do you think we should delete it, or?
I, I, I don't know. To be honest with you, I'm not sure if, um, nothing against landscape architects, I, I, I don't know if that requirement for, I mean, bigger projects are more than likely going to hire a landscape architect. Uh, but as long as you meet the landscaping code and have a decent landscaping plan, I don't know if you need a landscape architect in order to achieve the goals that we're trying to achieve. Mike, what do you think?
I think we have, I think we have accepted some from the landscape companies.
Right.
In the past too. So maybe it says landscape architect or, or other design, or other landscape, design or landscaping professional. I mean, a civil engineer could do it, an architect can do a simple one, you know, it, it, so I, I think it is a little bit limiting, um.
How are you worried to make sure it's a professional?
Say that again?
He said adding landscape and land, or landscaping professional.
We talked about this in the landscape code, and then we had a registered landscape architect go over our landscape code.
Yeah.
At that point, when I was looking for somebody to review the landscape code, there really aren't that many registered landscape architects, so.
So we could say or landscaping professional, because then it could be like a.
Well, as an example, the Mazda pro, a project that came before us a month or so ago, that didn't have a landscape architect seal on it.
But we'll, we'll add then, or landscaping professional.
New because we didn't have.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we can add, we can add or landscaping professional so that it allows for both. But this way at least it means there's somebody looking at it, not just like, you know.
Yeah, Peter, I just looked through the code and I can't find any requirement today for a landscape architect to stamp it.
Should we remove it or add or landscaping professional, like I both suggested?
I would remove that because like, what Amanda said.
Well, it's our goal.
What constitutes a landscape professional? Can a civil engineer do this job? What makes a landscape professional in fact a landscape professional? Can I register business tomorrow?
What do you put architect or landscape professional, so they have the option of using their architect that's doing their site plan? They have the option of hiring a landscaping company to do a plan? I guess the only thing you're trying to avoid is like Mr. Claybin just drawing a couple bushes on his site plan. So how do you just avoid that situation?
Hypothetically, Mr. Claybin.
Yeah. I mean, remember, Mr. Claybin had somebody draw the rain gardens then were installed in the wrong location. So we do want to give it some level of professionalism without it being too onerous. So I like Amanda's suggestion, architect or other landscaping professional. Because that way then if they hired, for example, Davy Treat to come in and design it, we would know that it would be done versus just somebody scratching something out on a napkin, so.
And so you guys know, the, the proposed landscaping code, we added, if landscaping plan is required, the landscape plan, or no, I lost it, sorry, does not have to be prepared by a landscape architect like it's in the state of.
I, I.
I don't know if that's wrong or.
Well, let's just take it out of here then.
Yeah.
We'll just say sealed by registered architect or other landscaping professional.
That sounds about right.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I got it written down.
I think I heard Eric say that he couldn't find anything in the current code, but I believe it's in the, that little two-page document, Jennifer, that you have of what's required of a submission in terms of, you need this drawing to scale, and you need this, and you need this. I believe that it said stamp landscape architect. Um, and I, because I believe in that ten social services documents that I submitted, um, it doesn't seem, I didn't think it says it in the code, but I think it might say it in those instructions. So you might just double check that, that they're consistent.
Okay.
Good idea.
Okay, alrighty.
Anything up to twelve twenty-one?
I'm good.
I just had a question on then twelve twenty-one E, the notifications. And it could be different, but on page twelve eight, uh, when it talks about public hearings and those notifications, it says three hundred feet from the subject property. But then on twelve twenty-one for the notifications for the site plan, it's two hundred feet. So I just wanted to make sure that those are supposed to be different.
It's not, it's supposed to be two hundred, that's a typo on the B subset I or one, that should be two hundred. You know what?
Well, zoning maps and zoning amendments or zoning map amendments.
It's five hundred.
It's different, yeah, that's.
Zoning map is five hundred, but this is for public hearings. So the zoning map amendment is five hundred. You know what though, if you remember, Hunter gave us a bunch that were three hundred because from whatever example he used. Um, our, our consultant used a, a, a version that always had three hundred and we caught, we thought we caught them all, but that's a good catch, thank you. It is two hundred in this, um, section. It will be five hundred though for a, uh, map amendment.
Okay.
But that's not in this part, so.
That means twelve thirty-one is also correct with two hundred.
Correct. So you know what, we'll make sure that, uh, I'll, I'm just going to say, look at twelve twenty-one, make sure the language is similar. Even though one's a mail notice, the other one's, you know.
Yeah, twelve thirty-one is where they showed the example, how to figure it out.
On which page was that?
Twelve thirty-one.
Yeah, which we like. Okay, anybody else have anything on twelve twenty-one?
Nope.
Okay. And we like our little map, we're just going to put a plug in for Hunter um, on twelve twenty-two of how we measure that two hundred, because we often get, um, well, we didn't receive the notice, we were not, you know, we're, we're, we were supposed to be sent one, and this is, now allows us a way to kind of show how we apply that two hundred. So, uh, we were, we were excited, we asked for this graph, graphic.
So it's two hundred from any point on the applicant's property line.
Correct.
Okay.
So that's why a lot of people will wonder why their neighbor got it and they didn't. So.
That's pretty clear, that seems to be fairly clear.
So this will help for cases like Dunkin' Donuts, contentious cases. Anyone, uh, next, uh, moving forward?
I have something on twelve twenty-six.
Anything before that, anyone?
Something on twelve twenty-five.
Anybody before that?
Nope.
Okay, twelve twenty-five it is.
Okay, so it's actually the, in the middle of the page, uh, section six, VI. It says, these are the proposers standards find the, uh, let's see, proposed use in terms of the following standards. Anyhow, it says must have vehicular approaches to the property which are designed to not create an interference with traffic on the surrounding public streets or roads. Is that new?
No, these are the six that I read during today's meeting.
Okay.
It's just blue.
Okay, then on the next section down, there's, um, additional standards for especially permitted. permitted use. Number three, it says that the establishment of an additional regulated use in the area must not be contrary to any program of neighborhood conservation. I'm not sure what that means.
Well, let's just remember that these, um, these are sexually oriented businesses.
Who?
These, this applies to sexually oriented businesses.
Oh, does?
Especially permitted use.
Oh, okay.
But that being said, we just are discussing, we really don't know what that means. But I will be honest that we really didn't spend a lot of time going through the specially permitted uses for sexually oriented because of, um, it is very limited. Um, I did catch something today ironically came up because of a temporary sign sheet issue, um, where in our table, Jen, I told Eric and Heather, but not you, on our table, we have specially permitted uses, um, in the I. So in other words, uh, the dome is a non-conforming use. So when that goes away, if it goes away for two years, it'll be gone. And they can only be in the industrial, but we also have them listed in our table in the ICR, which is West Main Street. And Eric, Heather and I were talking that we think maybe we don't really want to do that. So we're gonna look at those specially permitted uses because we really haven't because it deals with sexually oriented, but we realized today because we caught that, that we probably should give it a read over and, and, um, adjust some of the, some of the wording. So anyways, just know that that's what that applies to, but we will look at these because we really didn't go through them very specifically because we don't apply these really ever.
It's a difficult section.
Yes. But we will look at these, Peter. So we, we don't know what that means either.
Okay. Well, so we don't, then we just get rid of it. Okay.
We likely will get rid of it, but that's, yeah, that's part of the existing code. We haven't changed it. This is in blue because we removed it from a different location.
So we might, um, you know, simplify these and just kind of make it clear. But basically because we're gonna limit those only to the industrial, some of these may not be applicable.
Okay. That's fine.
Unless they, uh, but a residential, we might have to look at that. So we might be bringing back a new version of some of these. So we'll let you know. Okay?
No.
Bridgette, is your screen frozen by chance?
Uh, no, I'm just not scrolling it. That's all. I'm looking, I'm looking down at my papers and I'm just so busy looking at my paper. Cause we're taking notes so we can share them with the, um, consultant. So the three of us have been taking copious notes here.
I just feel bad for the one person who watches this on YouTube in a year and a half that misses out on that first.
Well, I can tell you that, um, when I send these notices out for these work sessions, I get crickets back. Let me just tell you that. But I have been very good about sending them out, making sure we advertise them in the paper. And I, I do send them to the clerk of council and to the city manager and members of council get them. It's just, you know.
Well, feel good that your members of the planning commission look like they actually read most of this. So there you go.
No, it's, it's good. You guys caught some great stuff. We're, uh, that's why more eyes on it, the better. Okay. So we are, we are going to review that section on 1225 that we just referenced here. So that we're gonna go through. All right. Who has the next, um, item? Somebody had something on 1226.
Yeah, 1226, section seven, fourth line down, same parcel until be resubmitted until the community development director. I think we need to remove the words until be resubmitted. I think there were a change in the sentence structure there and we just forgot to take out those three words. It can just read until the community development director determines that.
Yeah, I read that. I couldn't follow it.
My other question, uh, in the lower section, when we say a substantial change in conditions surrounding the property in section three there, what is the definition of substantial? Or is that up to the discretion of the community development director?
Yeah. We, we actually decide that administratively. We, we talked about this. Um, there, the four of us, the development planner, the development engineer, the assistant law director and the director sit down and will determine when we think that we, I'll look at this from different advantage points. So we don't want to clearly define it because if you do that and something comes, substantial can be with regards to a use or it could actually be the structure itself. So, um, that definition, we determine it now and let people know if we feel it needs to go to planning commission. If it's something that we are not comfortable making a call on, we will make them go to planning commission.
Then my last question for them.
Chris, real quick, if, uh, you, if the applicant however disagrees with the director's decision, that decision can then be appealed to the BZA if they believe that the commissioner or the director has made an error in judgment about whether or not it's a substantial change. And then the BZA gets to decide.
Right. I'm, I'm happy with it being up to the discretion of, of the director and the team, uh, because then we're not pulling ourselves into a pigeonhole where we set a precedent somewhere else.
Exactly. Exactly. And we've actually had this come up quite a bit, honestly. There's a couple a year that we, uh, sit down and then make that determination. If there's too many questions, we, we send it to you guys.
And my last question is in section eight. Why, uh, just out of curiosity, why do we have that to 10 years? Is there some process behind that?
We have used this in, um, a couple situations. Claybin Ford had parking in the back and they weren't gonna build it all within, there's a requirement, um, to build something within two years. So they weren't gonna be able to build it or they weren't sure if they wanted to build it within two years. So they made it phase one and phase two, then you have 10 years to build it. Another example is the storage structures at Turf Trimmer, um, 1480 Fairchild. They have storage units. So they did that in a phased plan so that they didn't have to keep coming back to planning commission every few years to build a building that's exactly like the one they just built. Um, it's just, they just had to come in and get their permits then.
Typically it's just.
Do we feel 10 is good?
Yeah. They, if they feel like, if it's much past that, it's obviously probably not gonna get done. But if they know what they're gonna be doing and they need to do it staged for financial reasons, this seems to be the maximum far out that we would be willing to go.
Another example is the cemetery. You don't know how far out you're gonna go and they'll plan to do that and over a 10-year period. Next, anyone?
1228.
Before we leave the planning commission section, um, I wanted to point out that you are also responsible for subdivision review. So we have to add a section in there that says what the criteria is similar to the site plan. You know, you have to submit this, this and this. We need to add that for subdivision. So.
We don't anticipate making changes. We just gotta add that.
We're just gonna take it from the subdivision and put it in there. So, okay. 28?
1228 is an easy one. It's just changing Robert's rules to the current edition again. And then adding that must be informed section. In order for it to make a decision.
And Chris, just while we were doing one of the other matters, I wrote up the language. So I'm proposing the language be three members of the planning commission or BZ or section, whatever section we're in, would constitute a quorum and a concurring vote of three members of the planning commission is necessary to enact an order or resolution. Whenever only three voting members are present for a specific case, the chair must notify the applicant prior to any dispositive vote that the applicant has the option of continuing the vote to another hearing date.
I wrote down Eric's wording. So did I. We'll, we'll have him read that to the consultant on Thursday. And we'll have to do that in all three.
Yeah.
1230? Um, section B subsection one, all applications for appeals, variances or non-conforming uses or interpretations. I feel like we can get rid of the or before non-conforming uses instead of having redundant ors.
No.
My next is 1232. Uh, this one's pretty minor and it's just a, a housekeeping piece. Under the board of zoning appeals, we don't, um, identify the BZA as actually being the BZA in the section above, but we do reference BZA one time in section A standing. So we either need to identify that the board of zoning appeals is the BZA or we just need to change it to, or just spell it out.
We're gonna spell it out.
Yeah.
We actually caught that in a bunch of other places, but we missed that one.
And then can you explain to me section D? Cause the wording seems weird to me, but it might just be because of the de novo.
Okay. I, I just wanted to read it before I started to talk. So, uh, when you're doing an appeal, uh, in front of the board of zoning appeals, we're just because you had limited evidence in front of the planning commission or in front of the city staff or whatever organization you're appealing, we are not limiting you to just presenting the evidence that was presented before. If you have new evidence, if you've, we're giving the applicant, the person making the appeal, the ability to introduce as much evidence as possible into their appeal. They are not limited just what they had before. If you were in a court of, in a trial court, you're limited to just the evidence you presented at the trial level. We're expanding that level to make it easier to win your appeal in order to get hopefully to the right answer. We don't want to win on a technicality that, well, you didn't have that evidence before. So you can't use it now. We're trying to make it open to any evidence you have that you believe will help support your cause.
So they can bring it to the meeting and introduce it for the first time.
I guess I understand that part. Uh, the part that's confusing to me is the way the sentence itself is actually structured. All reviews of an appeal perform de novo, which means is not limited to the evidence. I, I guess it just reads weird to me. Um.
Well, I'll try to stab it writing it a different way and see if I can come up with a better way.
What if you just take the word which out?
Yeah. And just say means that the board of it is not limited. Yeah. Just check out the word which. That's a good one, Jen.
Would it be better if it said, all reviews of an appeal are performed de novo? Meaning that.
Yeah, that's.
The board of zoning appeals is not limited?
I would be fine with that. I think it's more clear.
Okay. Good, good, good.
And catch on that.
Yep. Right. I put reword, but we actually just did.
Yeah. Jennifer's got it.
Anything else? Anyone on? Next page?
What page are we on now?
Whatever. We just finished 1232. So if anybody's got anything following that?
Nope.
I have something for 1237. Does someone have something before that?
Nothing.
That'll be your quorum paragraph again?
That stuff, yes. Um, also in section B, uh, city council will serve up to three consecutive complete terms. There should be a period there. Um, obviously the most recent version of Robert's rule is required to notify.
We actually need to change that because of the recent ruling.
But my concern bigger on this section would have been, we're talking about architecture review board. The architectural review board will meet on the first Tuesday of each month. Does that overlap with us?
They meet at, uh, three o'clock in the afternoon.
They also, we bring the projects to the architecture review board before we come to you. So like if we are meeting with you today, they would have come two weeks ago. To the board.
Peter, did you also have something on 37?
Yes, on 37. And I've discussed this before, but number eight, it says the powers and duties. It says it is the responsibility of the architecture review board to promote interest and appreciation and historic preservation and compatible building design within the city of Kent. I, I, I just, I have a real problem with what the architecture review board has been given to render their decisions. The design guidelines, I've read those three or four times. And other than mentioning something other than general design, their design guidelines for historic preservation in the downtown district in, in the city of Kent. And I personally don't think that those design guidelines are, uh, sufficient to do true architectural review of projects. They're too slanted toward historic preservation. I have nothing against historic preservation, but I don't think that should be, uh, the guiding factor for all, uh, architecture review board decisions. They, they come into play uh, for certain parts of the city and, and certain buildings and projects, but not all. And I think it's just too arbitrary. Uh,
We would agree, but unfortunately, changing the design guidelines is not part of the zoning code update.
I understand that, but.
It needs done totally separately.
It's part and parcel of, the architecture review board. Composition of it is questionable. And how it's set up. It's not called an architecture review board for nothing. Okay. It's architectural review. It's not electrical engineer review. Okay. Or draftsman review board. It's architectural review board. And it's all part and parcel of the city's process of how and who can be on the board. That taken into account, if you have people who are not qualified to make design decisions, making design decisions based on a document that is geared almost exclusively to historic preservation, how can you expect to get decisions that are based on architectural merit?
Are you suggesting we should change the powers and duties or we just need to update the guideline?
The whole thing needs to be looked at. I think, and, and I will tell you, it comes from, it comes from experience. It comes from actually watching some of these things on, I must be bored. Uh, I, I've watched some of the reviews. It's, our planning commission is an excellent board. We really do a great job and we do it under the guise of the zoning code. And it still is very difficult, difficult for us to make decisions on a lot of issues. But we do by and large make educated decisions based on the code. The architecture review board is totally arbitrary. It should be called the arbitrary review board. Not the architectural review board. There are no guidelines for architecture. And there's no, and there's one architect on the board.
So do you want to eliminate the architectural review board?
No, I don't. I want it, I want an architecture review board that can make decisions based on architecture and not some preconceived notion of what they think it should be. I don't want.
Some of the changes that are coming to the boards and commissions were driven by questions regarding some of the architectural review boards. So there is. So there is going to be, for example, term limits on all boards. Term limits that are either specific to the number of terms or the, um, number of years. It's basically three terms or no more than 12 years and that is in effect. So anybody that's been serving that many boards or that, that long on the architectural board would not have that opportunity to continue. They need to be off for a full term, a full term. They can't just be off for a year. Uh, they also cannot be on more than one board, which we have some people that are on multiple boards. But the design guidelines themselves were not something that was put forth by the administration. It was done, uh, at pre, pre, while Jen was here, but she was not part of that process. Um, in that process, we do want to update those. That's going to be coming in phase two of the zoning code update and not in this phase where we're dealing with the, more of the nuts and bolts of it. Um, and the, basically, there's been discussion to, um, of other aspects of the architectural review board. So the things that you're expressing are expressed by others, but in these two sections, the seven and eight is not where we're going to be able to correct those matters for this phase of the zoning code update.
Will the planning commission have a voice in those conversations? Because we're one of the groups that's most affected, if not the group that's most affected by their decisions.
We could, one of the things that I, I, I know that Howard would say that they, you know, did the landmark and Avant 220 and the hotel, and those do reflect, um, contemporary blended with, with the stuff from the design guidelines.
I'm not worried about what Howard would say.
Maybe what we can do is the, instead of doing historic preservation and compatible building design or.
I thought they were supposed to look at both. But I'm saying if you put compatible building first, then the focus isn't on the flip that order as much.
Sure.
If you say or, it gives them an out. If you say or and they don't like a project, they can come back and say, well, we focused on the historic preservation and it doesn't meet that. It might meet compatible, but we chose to go with historic preservation and it didn't meet that, so we're kicking it out.
We'll leave the and, but Jen's suggestion is to put compatible building first in that order.
That may be, that's all fine and dandy, but the design guidelines were put together for historic preservation and almost exclusively for historic preservation. And that is basically the only guideline. It, it says in here two different times. That's what they base their, their decisions on. And I don't have
It is. We cannot change them at this point, at this juncture.
What's?
We're not able to change them at this juncture in the zoning code update.
That's coming.
It's coming, but it is an expensive endeavor to undo those entire design guidelines and the money was allocated for the rest of the zoning code. The design guidelines need to be done for separate allocation of tens of thousands of dollars to get them done, redone.
I will give you that, but then I will also go on record to say that I would much rather see the city's money spent on revising the architecture review board, design guidelines, makeup, the whole, the whole gamut than spending money on developing a bicentennial plan that has absolutely no teeth or, or it. The city spent, I went to all those meetings 20 years ago. Something was put together and it has no meaning. It, it has no teeth. No one has to follow it.
I agree.
So would it be possible?
We would agree with updating the design guidelines. We have no, we are not going to get any disagreement from us. We just don't have the funds appropriated to tackle that in this phase of the, the zoning code update.
But I think that's the most important thing. That's the most, based on what I have seen, that is one of the more important things. And, you know, I drive down West Main Street, but talked to Jennifer about this this afternoon. We had, there were great sketches of what West Main Street was going to look like and that bicentennial. And all it is, is a parking lot for used cars.
So later on, Peter, could we not send a resolution? I, I understand you're very passionate about this and I, I understand why because we've run into so many headaches. Can we not later on at a separate meeting draft a resolution to send a recommendation to council to make this a priority to take up in the near future when we're making considerations for what funding is going to be? Obviously, it's something that we can't address today, but it's something that we can send a clear message to council on saying we want this addressed.
I think that's a good idea and I agree with you.
It is, and council, there are members of council that are in concurrence with that approach. So it, we are definitely planning on going with a request for appropriations to have that done. It's just not part of this appropriation.
Okay.
And we're happy to send, yeah. We're happy to send a resolution to support that.
I just want to make it clear that I'm adamant about this.
No, I, we understand. There are many that understand.
Thank you.
As you remember, Gary Locke did not want to adopt those design guidelines either.
Well, that's all I have. I'm done.
On 1238, um, trying to figure out what my question was here. Replacement anytime, section B at the bottom. At any time after initial certificate of appropriateness is issued to a project, an applicant may seek a new certificate or its conditions if the design is altered or if the site plan presents. Shouldn't it be shall?
I'm sorry, what number are you at? What number are you on?
1238, down at the bottom, section four subsection B.
Okay, I see it now. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So where it says replacement anytime after an initial certificate of appropriateness is issued to a project, an applicant may seek dot, dot, dot. If the changes have happened, shouldn't it be they shall seek? Because shall would compel them to seek a new certificate of appropriateness versus them deciding whether or not they need one?
Well, it's still before they put it up, right? Maybe we should say that the margin is to be altered.
Must not shall.
We'll look at it.
Yeah, no, no.
Look at the wording.
Yeah, the way we have it worded right now, if you're going to change the, uh, change the certificate of appropriateness, you must seek a new certificate. If you are approved and you want to change it, then it would be a may. But the way I think we have it worded right now, I think you're right, it's a must.
We don't use the word shall. We use must. That's an Eric thing.
Totally is an Eric thing.
Okay, so then on page 38, 1238, number C, it's as an exemption if the structure is owner occupied and the structure is used as a single family residential unit, it's exempt from the architecture review board if it's in the overlay district. Is that something we added because of what we discovered a couple months ago or a year ago?
That is, that is directly related to you, yes.
Yeah, it's basically, we, we wanted to articulate the way we have always, um, applied it. Um, so we just wanted to specify here in the code.
I thought that was, that, that we either added it or that's, that's an add from based on our discussions, uh, before. Um, and then on page 39C.
Do we have the thing here we're about to put close to planning commission?
In the last second, the last second, the third, uh, line, we have to add 24 months of the data certificate.
Yep, good catch. Top of the next page, letter C.
After 24.
After the number 24.
Okay, well, then I'm not going to go through any more of this stuff because everyone knows how I feel about it. I gotta go, it's past my bedtime.
I have something small on 12, or on 1347. So in section two on 1347, in reference to access to records, it says for public examination in the city of Kent Community Development Department, should we change that to by allowing the community development department to make an online option available later so they don't have to physically be there to look? Because if you can post something online or, I feel like this compels someone to have to be there physically.
I think it's just saying that the files are here, but that we, we always offer it electronically.
Okay.
We'll put the wording, but the wording is just, I think that's what it means. We retain them here, but we disseminate that information electronically. In fact, we prefer to, but some people do come in, but we will word that differently.
Under F1, can we change master plan to comprehensive plan because it says master plan, but then we reference the comprehensive plan instead?
Actually, that is supposed to be changed. We found that in other spots, too.
And then 1348, section eight, you discuss nearby properties at the bottom of that planning commission. May, may consider all nearby properties, including properties outside the jurisdiction of the city. I'm guessing we're leaving that intentionally vague?
Yes, that was a change we made, uh, related to one of the apartment development proposals on Horning Road, uh, to be able to allow to consider what's going on in the township.
Okay. Uh, period at the end of section G. And then my last thing is on 141, section 111404, any approval given by the planning commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, which is not used, should that be and/or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And should architectural review board also be included in that section or are we fine with leaving it to the commission and BZA?
Because, yeah, architecture review board is, they've still got to come in front of one of the other agencies, so.
I, I am done holding up the process then.
I think the COA, isn't it like 12 months on that anyway?
Yeah.
A certificate of appropriateness, if that's all that is involved, that only has a 12-month limit anyway, so it's different.
All right. Uh, so that was work session number nine. I have a question, Mr. Fink. Do we need to formally excuse Mr. Bruder, um, from exiting the meeting early before we go to meeting minutes and adjournment?
He was present for the meeting, so we're fine.
Okay. Moving on to
It can be, it can be used against him for, uh, removing him from the board because he was present for the, the voting part of the meeting.
Right, the formal part.
Okay. Um, going on to the meeting minutes, we had meeting minutes from August 18th. Um, the only change that I saw, it was very vague on page one correspondence, um, area, the letter from Brad Maxwell, just the word held was in there twice, so it kind of seemed confusing. Um, so that's the only change that I've seen in there. Were there any other changes, Mr. Clevenger, Morris, or Mr. Pino that you noticed?
No.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second and any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries three to zero.
Move to quickly adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries three to zero.
Peter, if you want to give us 50K, we'll get the design guidelines started right now.
What?
Peter, I'll write them for you, too.
I'll write them and Chris can put them in English. How's that?
All right, good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you.